Thanks. All right. I'll call to order this meeting of the Terre Haute City Council's Planning, Zoning, and Improvements Committee. Today is, it's five o'clock on Thursday, March the 11th, 2024.
Monday.
Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Counselperson Azar?
Here.
Counselperson Bowlin?
Here.
Counselperson DeBon?
Here.
Counselperson Hinton?
Here.
Counselperson Nation?
Here.
Counselperson Thompson. Five are present, one is absent.
All right, thanks. We've got three things on the agenda. I, just to be clear, I don't really expect this committee to issue any recommendations, especially not on the updating the city code or the extending city water to underserved parts of the city, pieces of the agenda. It was pointed out that that may be, or taking any kind of action on them anyway, may be part, may put us at odds with our council rules. So, and I don't disagree with that. What I was hoping to do, though, is have public conversations about these pressing issues and invite the mayor to talk to us about what's happening, a process that we might follow for first, updating the city code. So, Mayor Sakman, if you would, can you talk to us a little bit about how this might go down?
Yeah, absolutely. So, good evening, members of the council. We're here today to discuss a couple of different items. The first of which is updating the city code. So, nine, over 900 pages long, different appendixes and such. The bottom line, there are sections in our code that are decades and decades old. I wouldn't say hundreds and hundreds of years, of course, but decades and decades old. I think you have seen that the administration is very proactive in updating city code, ranging from the grass cutting fee to the right-of-way ordinance, the right-of-way fee and that sort of structure. But just to put that into perspective, that is like nine weeks in hours and hours of city legal support, city engineering support, because it was coming specifically from those two sections, and even code enforcement, right? So, taking time away from them to update these ordinances and such, and that led to a conversation of updating the city code. You are seeing across the state of Indiana and really across the nation, governors, mayors, recognizing the need to update municipal government code. That is a huge lift for even a city like Indianapolis, or even a city like Bloomington, closer to our size, with multiple attorneys on staff. And you are seeing this being contracted out to larger law firms. The administration is open to having this conversation of essentially contracting out a total revision of our city code, which is a nine-to-12-month process with, we would obviously tailor the requests for proposals to meet our demands, but what we are looking to do is have that conversation prior to this May. Why is this May so important? Well, as we look at the Terre Haute city budget, we are going to begin that process in May of this year. We're going to begin it earlier than usual. We are obviously working on the last administration's budget, and there are some concerns. There are some line items and some transfers that will simply have to be made, but before we do something like update the city code and send out RFPs, we'd like to look at doing that next calendar year. We've had time to look at our budget and create a line item within services contractual to do just that. So, that's where we're at. Obviously, when they update a city code, here's what's needed next. Priorities from the council and the mayor of sections to start at first. We really want to create a rolling document. Yes, some sections feed into others, and those will be kind of your year-long lifts. But, for example, the animal commission, I actually enjoy working with them. They are full of ideas to kind of keep some negligent animal owners accountable, but those are some projects that, well, if they update the city code in month one, why would we not put that into action month two or month three? So, that's just why we need to really get our priorities as an administration and as a council over to whichever firm does this, and this isn't happening for months, but it's good to kind of have that conversation upfront, so we know, looking into the budget, well, it will tentatively cost this much in 2025, and we will get these.
As part of a premeditated budget plan.
Yep. And then we would look at November or December, getting those requests for those RFPs, and then in a January or February Board of Public Works meeting, actually approving them, because, one, that's when the funding will be there, right, the next calendar year, but, two, if we get the RFPs early, it gives folks time to review it, specifically the council and the administration, to say, okay, well, here's our thoughts on this, and of course, it'll go through the Board of Public Works for approval.
That sounds like a fine deliberative process. I, you know, I was asked by the last administration last year to try to help work on this, and we could never really figure out how to start, when to start. But it was noteworthy to me that the former mayor didn't really worry about the money. He was, he asserted that we had it, that he could pay for it out of, at it, which I think is something that we did a lot of, or at least we said we do a lot of. So, anyway, I think that that all sounds fine, and I'm glad to hear that you've got a plan on how to attack this. I think it'll take longer than a year, and I think it'll span more than one budget year, but I may be wrong. Do you have a sense of which Indiana firms specialize in this kind of thing, or is it too early to talk about that?
You know, it's not necessarily that it's too early. A lot of folks will say they're into municipal law. We will look at some of the frequent flyers, your Boz McKinneys, your Tafts, Barnes-Thoringsberg, but that being said, we are really going to sit down and probably have long kind of interviews in person with myself, the city attorney, just to get a feel for what body of work they have to show when they're saying, hey, we'd like to take on this project. A lot of cities are doing this, so there are good examples of firms that we can look at. We'll not commit to one. We'll have an open process, of course, to get the maximum amount of bids for that project.
Mayor, I really appreciate you being willing to talk about this and share this with us. I, again, you know, this is mostly just to have a starting point, and that's why I wanted you to have this conversation with us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just one. Are you going, if you hire a firm to do whatever they need to do, will they inform you and us as to what they feel are the priorities in the city code, or are we supposed to go through the city code and we decide what's a priority?
I would like it to be a two-way conversation. Like, of course, I'm going to look at him and say, well, I want you to do this, this, and this. But they are also professional municipal attorneys, and so I do expect them to say, well, you know, problem A or problem B is really feeding into problems E, F, and G. Or, well, you need to move problem D ahead of a problem A and B, and here's why. So, you know, I'll kind of review as much as I can and then provide recommendations. Of course, our city attorney and our city staff will, from a staffing perspective, and, I mean, 20 years on the council, I'm sure you've got your thoughts on which sections could use some work.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Twenty, twenty-four, so we'll get that feedback as well, too.
Okay.
And I would imagine, between the council and the city administration, you're going to see consistent themes that will really push towards the top.
Thank you. And I do agree with Councilman Nation, that it's going to take more than a year. This is not something that's going to be done in a year.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons.
Good problem to have, you know.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to start the conversation as soon as possible, you know, try to get a plan in place, so that maybe we can get it done, you know, within this administration and within this, you know, first term. And I, just incidentally, I think that it's, that one department that will have a significant amount of input is probably engineering, you know, in the way that they've already informed some of the things that the council's been asked to do. They've always got ideas about where our weaknesses are in the code, because they're on the front lines of trying to deal with it every day. I mean, I know that all parts of government theoretically are, but I think that engineering is really up front.
Absolutely. Engineering and building inspection.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm still lumping those two together in my mind. And then, of course, city legal, since, you know, you guys are figuring out, on behalf of, since everybody's coming to you with questions, presumably.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you again. Any other questions for the mayor? This one? Okay. The second one is discussion of the ARPA request for downtown hotels. The, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, what we, like we did at the meeting the other evening, and I appreciate your forbearance on that, everybody. What we didn't really get into the other night was kind of an extension of this conversation about our code. Back in, I think it was 2011, I was part of a big group of downtown stakeholders, which included city council people and people who own property, representative of the banks, just churches, a lot of folks coming up with special ordinance 17, which added the C8 and C9 zoning classifications to our city code. And, you know, at the time, I mean, we worked for over a year on that. We had a lot of input, a lot of negotiation, and we thought that we were putting something in place that was pretty clear and had clear goals and clear development standards for projects that would happen in downtown. C8, of course, is the larger footprint of downtown, from Poplar up to Cherry, from Third Street to the railroad tracks. And C9 is the pedestrian core, which is Wabash Avenue and then Seventh Street. And we, we made a, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, a higher standard or the highest standards for development in C9. And the project, the proposed project at Seventh and Wabash really is right there in the heart of the area that we were trying to guide development in. The effort was, or part of the effort was, to steer away from surface parking in C9 and specifically along Wabash Avenue. And although it's proposed to be part of a garage and screened, we find ourselves with a proposal in front of us that would dedicate a significant chunk of Wabash Avenue frontage to parking in the C9 district. Of course, it's not clear. It's a gray area, because there is a roof on it, and it's part of a larger development that involves both, that involves commercial space and involves hotels. These are all things that we're trying, and it's, although it's not structured parking, it is a parking project, or parking is part of the project, and these are all things that the code and the people who worked on it were trying to encourage, too. I asked Michael Wright to take a look at the code and what's happened and where we are, and give us some information, his take on it, so I invite him at this moment to do that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Nation, Mike Wright, city attorney. I did go through the code in preparation for this evening's committee meeting, and some points, you know, I would like to make, and I thank Todd for sending me, you know, multiple emails out in advance to get the information out there. The relevant part of our discussion really begins in the preamble to the C8 downtown business district that Todd described. In subsection R uses, specifically subsection 2, I'll quote, "establishments for the sale or provision of services such as, but not limited to, personal appearance or care, finance, legal, insurance, real estate, accounting, clothing, clothing and goods, repair, offices, printing, parking, parking garages, and facilities, entertainment, recreation, hotels, food and drink, apartments, and similar establishments." So, my concern is that the project as proposed fits in one of the designated uses, and it's not a concern, it's a reality, to the code as it exists now. The other provision of the code that I found somewhat relevant was in the subsection Y, the off-street parking provisions. Subsection 1 of subset Y, "there shall be no parking required for individual establishments in the C8 downtown district, except as noted here and after. This will encourage the establishment of new enterprises, which would find it especially difficult to provide parking on relatively small building lots." Subsection 2, "rather, private enterprise construction of major parking facilities with governmental cooperation, which would more efficiently provide for the parking needs generated by various sized downtown activities, shall be encouraged." That's just before the preamble to the C9 section of the code. The C9 district is the most restrictive district in the zoning ordinance, and, in my opinion, the project as proposed is not using surface parking as a primary use, which is what I believe the code prohibits. I do believe that a developer seeking to establish a surface parking lot in the C9 district would be in violation of your ordinance. My legal opinion is this project is not surface parking as a primary use. This is a capital hotel project that has parking needs associated with it that, in their opinion, is best dealt with, with structured parking at grade, you know, at more at ground level, to accommodate their other desire to incorporate an existing parking structure that, you know, would enhance the ability of people to move from that parking structure to a hotel lobby without exposing themselves to the elements via skywalk. So, my opinion on the issue of surface parking, Todd, on the C9 district is, is parallel with yours. I, my, my opinion is based on the idea that no matter what, whether the parking spots are at the bottom or they're at the top, everybody recognizes hotels have parking needs associated with them. And this is, in my view, a enhanced solution to what's there now that does not create new surface parking as a primary use. I mean, that's, it's, the primary use of that property, in my mind, is still a hotel, no matter where the parking is provided. I think the other, I went through the C9, you know, I think the conditions that, you know, the frontage be facing Wabash and all those conditions regarding the development standards within the C9 district can still be accommodated. It's just the idea that the structured parking at ground level means the primary use of that parcel is parking. I think that ignores the fact that there's a commercial hotel on top of it that's really the primary use of, I mean, it, that's why there's a development being proposed, is because they're proposing to put in a hotel, so. I think the code, as it was written in 2011, as you described, you know, it, it does that well, I think protects the idea that, you know, a blank asphalted parking lot in the C9 district would not be an enhancement and would not be a permitted use. But my disagreement, I guess, comes from the idea that it, that's not, it's not the primary use. In my opinion, the fact that they have parking needs is obvious, and how they choose to deal with that from a development standpoint, as long as it is being run through the processes that the city has in place to ensure the development standards are being met, which they have been doing, that it complies in the letter and spirit of the existing ordinance as a qualified use in the C9 district, so.
Well, thank you, Michael.
You're very welcome.
As, as you understand it and as it's written, does it require a variance from the VZA?
No.
Okay, thanks.
I think the, if I may, just the, the variance issue was brought up in regards to the parking situation as it exists there now. There was a, I think, an ordinance introduced that was ultimately withdrawn that sought in some form to ensure that certain parking conditions in the C9 district could be met. That was debated on whether or not that was usurping the statutory rights of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, the ordinance as it exists now provides that there is appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals on variances from the development standards in C8 and C9. So, if, I mean, I don't want to speak for the, I, I believe your question to be, you know, would they need a variance for the parking issue? They may need a variance for some other issue that I'm unaware of at this point, but as to the parking issue, the answer to your question is, yes. They would not need to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, because this is not a surface parking level. Surface parking project at its core, it is a hotel project at its core, and the parking is an obvious accessory use for a hotel, so.
As part of our earlier discussion about updating the city code, in my 20 years on the council, I think this is probably the biggest chunk of new code that was added. We've made a lot of tweaks and other pieces of, like, adjustments to the existing code. But as far as introducing, you know, a new, whole new sections, C8 and C9 was, if not the biggest, it's one of the biggest that I remember dealing with. Do you, do you remember anything bigger than that, George? My point is that as we approach updating our city code, I think that while there may be some work to do on this section, there's probably more work to do on the rest of the code to make it all fit together in a way that's a little bit more consistent. You know, the idea of uses versus accessory uses and clarifying all of that, if it's, I mean, and maybe it's just my status as a layperson and not an attorney, maybe it's clearer than I realize. But nonetheless, I think that we have work ahead of us on all sections of the city code, probably including this one, and making it all fit together better.
I, I tend to agree with you there, Todd. I mean, I think the, there's a very good foundation here. I think, though, to truly interpret the intention of the council, sometimes there just needs to be more, you know, a lot of times, code is crafted in a general way to be purposefully vague, to provide the possibility of broader interpretation, you know? That's, I think, pretty common in legislatures. But when it comes to zoning and development standards for, you know, significant projects in downtown, you know, they often welcome clarity and, you know, specifics and provides them with that knowledge beforehand, so they know where, you know, things are going. So, I think this, you know, this put everybody on notice that there were development conditions downtown, and I think they've, you know, done a tremendous job of building up downtown over the, you know, 18 years that I've been back here working, and, you know, that's, I think this project will enhance that further, and I just don't see it as a surface-level parking project, so.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything to ask our city attorney about this?
Just a couple of questions. It's funny, because when I was looking over everything you sent the other night, two words I circled were "primary use." And I kind of feel the same way you do, that that is not the primary use of this particular, even though I would love to see, you know, retail and so on. I think that'd be wonderful. But specifically, since this says "primary use," I'm inclined to agree with you on that. What I, what I want to know, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, does that just specifically for the lot at Seventh and Wabash, or is that terminology used throughout the code?
Throughout the code.
It is throughout the code, because I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. I mean, primary use is a significant term in zoning law. So, I mean, that's what often boils down to the, you know, the real decision of what is, what is going to what is, what is going to generate, you know, what's going to be generated on this property, you know, whether that be hotel services or, you know, restaurants or?
I was going to ask you that. What if a restaurant or an office building? And they, and again, I agree with you on this 100%. Let's assume just for the sake of the code situation, that you have an office building. And they're going to build an office, but they need parking for their office. So is that considered a primary use? Is not considered?
The, the code accepts the need for them to have parking if they choose to locate their business downtown. Because typically, yes, businesses have to provide parking for their customers. But this section of the code is geared towards promoting pedestrian traffic. And so it's, you know, that's why I quoted that provision that's in the code now about rather private enterprise construction of major parking facilities with governmental cooperation, which would more efficiently provide for the parking needs generated by various sized downtown activities shall be encouraged. So, you know, it, you knew in 2011 that by taking surface level parking as a demonstrated need for all business that you were going to create parking issues. And that was going to be dealt with through the private enterprise with governmental cooperation. And the impact on businesses is that, you know, they're explaining to their clients, well, you just need to find a spot unless they're able to accommodate like at 500 Wabash, you know, that project back. That's what the ordinance provides for is that if you're going to do something in the C nine district that requires parking, you're going to build a facade along Wabash. That, you can't build it on facing Fifth Street. You're going to build it along Wabash and you're going to provide surface level parking in the back. But that's, even in that instance, it's not its primary use.
Right.
It's just a necessary, you know, prerequisite to having people come into work each day. They need a place to park.
Right.
And the hotel is not that different in that there's a, you know, if it were strictly commercial buildings going in, then they wouldn't need to provide, you know, except to make sure the conditions of their business succeeding were still present. They would not need to provide parking at any level. But hotel project has with it, you know, conditions that you have to meet to be in the hotel business and providing parking for your guests is one of those. And so much like the 500 Wabash project, their solution is putting parking at grade so they can connect to an existing parking structure that still fronts Wabash, you know. That's what the code as it exists now is meant to promote is private entities providing solutions and doing so in a manner that conforms with the code. And I, I believe looking at it objectively, that I can say, you know, that with a high probability that a judge would agree with me that the primary use of this project or the primary use of the 500 Wabash project is not surface level parking, although it exists there. It's just a a byproduct of development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this part, and again, can I continue? I think this part of the particular part of the code, and I'm going to go with Seventh and Wabash as the particular, was meant to prevent someone buying the buildings, tearing them down and putting a huge parking lot there.
That's right.
And I believe that's probably the intent of this. And, you know, again, I would love to see it the way Todd, I'm sure, would like to see it. However, I also believe that you're correct that the primary use is a hotel and not parking. And, you know, I personally don't want to see a project, this project not happen because of a debate on whether it's surface parking or not.
Certainly, yeah.
I don't think it is.
I, I think, you know, I, I understand the the concern and, you know, I, I think, you know, in this instance, government has worked. I mean, there have been meetings on the topic between the developer and, and members of the council, you know. Things have been planned to, you know, try and, and help the the concerns that have been addressed, although not every concern is being maybe satisfied. I, I feel comfortable in saying that the process here has produced a solution to a problem that I think everybody in this room would recognize is that, you know, when we build a convention center downtown, you've got to have hotels for people to stay in. And, and having those hotels close to that convention center is a big selling point. And this project produces that result and does so in a manner that the developers view as, you know, tolerable from a business perspective. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a question. Did you, I probably got this wrong. Did you say that the property at 500 Wabash was required to put parking behind it?
Yes. So the 500 Wabash property has, you know, an insurance business in it, the parking all between Cherry and Wabash to provide for the apartments
Yeah.
and the businesses that occupy the building.
My memory is bad, but I'm trying to remember the design. So you have the front facing with the screens with parking. Is there parking behind that parking? Because I know there was trying to be, what's behind it?
Well, so, yeah, Brian, you, you want to?
Yeah, so really, there's, the only thing behind our proposed building is the alleyway. We're basically occupying the entire block from zero lot line to zero lot line.
Which would be butting against the federal building.
The alleyway, yes, would be the only thing remaining between the two buildings. If I may, I'll be honest with you. I thought we were coming here to debate commercial space. I didn't know we were going down this path, but I would, I would challenge the idea that we're providing any surface parking. I mean, in my experience, what we're proposing is structured parking, absolutely. I, I didn't know that's where the conversation was headed, but I'll just share with you a quick definition. Both definitions, if you'll allow me. So surface parking means parking spaces that are not covered by a building and are not enclosed by walls. That's, that's not what we're providing. Structured parking means a structure or portion thereof comprised of one or more levels or floors used exclusively for the parking or storage of motor vehicles, including underground and parking at grade within a building or structure. So, I mean, I think, again, I, I didn't know we were having this debate over surface parking. I think once you, you, you understand those two definitions, the primary versus secondary is somewhat a moot point. I mean, I think every aspect of what we're providing is structured parking. There's no surface parking. The way I would define surface parking included within the project.
How high does the top of it go? It's covered, right, it's a structured?
The building or the first level?
The first level of the parking.
I think we're going to be somewhere around 17 to 18 feet.
That's, that's one level. There's another level of parking?
There's, no, one level of parking. Yeah, so the first level of the, the structure, the second floor finished floor height will be somewhere between 17 and 18 feet. And that's really for two reasons. One is to align with the third floor of the parking garage. And second is to create enough clearance for vehicles passing below the pedestrian bridge on Wabash Avenue. Which 17 feet will be plenty. I think most interstate bridges are 14, 14 and a half, somewhere in that vicinity. But I think it's important to understand the difference between those two definitions. Because we are not proposing any surface parking as part of the project.
Anybody else?
So I, I guess that's something we need to consider when we, when we look at updating our ordinances. Because I don't know that we have anything that talks about what Brian shared with us with regards to structured parking, do we?
Well, it's identified as a part of, you know, one of the things that we want to encourage, but we don't go so far as to say, and it shall be at the rear. Or, you know, the, along the pedestrian core frontage on Wabash Avenue and on Seventh Street or in any other area that we want to encourage this kind of development. It will be like behind commercial space or space, you know, I guess, commercial space because at the ground floor level, we're discouraging residential space.
I guess when I just do a search of the code, I don't find structured parking. I can find surface park, parking multiple places, but.
I think the only spot that, that I'd seen it, Councilwoman Bolland was, you know, in the use section of C eight.
Okay. Because I'm in C nine and says same as C eight, so.
Yeah. So.
Do we have anything that addresses the walkways?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not something that we really anticipated.
I wouldn't, I'm sure.
I guess I should say, within the context of C eight and C nine, there's no language. And so, yeah, that's not something that we saw coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Brian, was this the least expensive way to do parking?
Yes, certainly. We, we had went down the path of providing all the parking on that site via a two, maybe three story parking garage. And it, it was, it just, it made the whole project dead in the water, to be honest with you, due to the cost of that. So when, when we came to that, we started to look around at other options available to us and started to look at the Sky Garden parking garage and how we could utilize it to solve the parking problem.
So you thought about, did you have any drawings of another design? Was this?
Oh, we did, yeah. We had some preliminary drawings. I'm sure many of you have seen those of a two or three story parking garage with a five story hotel on top of that. And you just, you know, that was probably pre-pandemic when construction costs were a little more reasonable. And since then, you know, the numbers just don't work.
So as developer, this is just, I'm trying to learn. As a developer, you're not going to be the owner of Courtyard Marriott properties?
Yeah, we will, a portion of it.
Okay. How, how long is it going to take you to turn profit? Have you done a pro forma?
I would defer that question to our hotel partner. We're, we're really a joint venture of sorts with a development arm and then a hotel operator. So questions about pro formas and things of that nature, I'm probably not the right one to answer those questions.
Anybody else? Brian, thank you for coming today and helping. Michael, thank you too. And I, you know, I say it as part of every conversation we have about this. I really want to see this project happen. I think it's important for downtown. And there are so many facets, there are so many boxes that this project ticks. My only concern is that there will not be as much commercial space along Wabash Avenue as there could be were it designed in another way. But that's not, I don't think that's enough to keep me from voting for it. I don't think that's enough to keep anybody on the council from supporting it. So on that note, we can go ahead and move on to the last item on our agenda, extending city water to unserved parts of the city. One of the reasons I wanted to put this on the agenda is because, you know, this is the Planning, Zoning and Improvements Committee. And these are improvements that are, that are needed for the city. And some of us, the mayor, Councilwoman Hinton, myself, Councilwoman Bolland, we've been part of meetings with Indiana American Water to try to get this project to, for us to try to understand it and for the mayor to have the support that he needs to bring forward the proposed ARPA appropriation to do a facet of it in Terrytown. So on that note, I'd like to tee up Mayor Sakman to talk a little bit about this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Nation. So in 2017, the Indiana General Assembly bipartisan bill, which does not happen often in our state, passed 1519 from the House, 1519 in 2017. And I encourage you to take a look at it. Essentially to say, if we have a neighborhood and the folks in the neighborhood are not connected to a water line, that the Indiana Utility Commission and a private company or municipal government will create a public-private partnership to bring water to their area. So here's how Indiana American Water, kind of from their perspective, looks at it. They can get new customers in a region by putting in water mains. The delta in a lot of these projects is the cost to connect from the water main to the residential or commercial owner. That is why these American Rescue Plans have really helped fill that gap. So what the administration is proposing is, within the Terrytown neighborhood, if you look, it's a very dense neighborhood. So you are connecting a lot of people to a fewer number of water mains. You've got a ratio that you kind of look to calculate. Number of customers to water main is how I, I view it. And this is a very dense area that fits the needs of this project. What we are able to do is say, hey, if we can get a certain percentage of customers to sign up for this, the money that we have from the American Rescue Plan will cover all connection fees for the resident to the water main. Right now, if you have a well, you're paying about $47 a month as a flat rate fee because you are not on water. So they are not able to kind of check some of your water usage. So there's an additional fee that goes on that sewage bill. That's, it's about $47. Why do I bring this up for this neighborhood specifically? The water cost of installation will be covered through funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. The cost that the resident would incur over time is a month to month usage cost. But if you're looking at estimates of a two person, three person and some four person households, that $47 charge falls off. that forty-seven-dollar charge falls off. And now, there are estimates and models showing that their sewage bill is going to be lower because the amount of water that they're using is less than forty-seven dollars worth of water. So that is the message that we, as government, need to get across to this population is, hey, we're covering you connecting to a water main. You are not going to have that cost. And by us controlling it, instead of Indiana American Water, we can go out and find contractors to do one entire street at a time. So now a contractor is doing twenty to thirty homes in a row, reducing that contractor cost, whereas if Indiana American Waters covering it, they get a contractor for two homes here, three homes here, four homes here. So our buying power is a little bit stronger. Actually, surprisingly, government controlling it than the private sector in this example. This is a tough project. It's a tough project to pull off. It requires at least seventy-five percent of the folks in the neighborhood to buy in, to say, yes, we're willing to do this. Obviously, if we get a hundred percent, that's great. And it makes it even under the two million dollars that we're looking to appropriate for this, honestly, pretty large area. When meeting with Indiana American Water, what we also looked at is the next neighborhoods to do this project at. So I really look at low to moderate income and density. We need to have a dense neighborhood that fits the low to moderate income kind of environment for us to really pursue a project. And some projects cost around two-hundred thousand dollars to around four-hundred thousand dollars. So we really have this window for the next couple of projects that we are looking at. And this is more of a pilot project tackling the largest, most dense area of our city. But if we can pull this off, it sets the groundwork for getting to the rest of these city pockets throughout Terre Haute. Some neighborhoods, we don't have control over. Lincolnshire is a great example. We get calls from them all the time. But they are still on Sealyville water, not Indiana American water. All we can do for them is provide testing kits to see if there's leads in, in their water. And then they can work it out with Sealyville water. And we can connect with Sealyville government and see where they're at in conversations with their water utility. But outside of them, there's a lot more pockets where we can have this conversation moving forward. And the plan is, starting in, towards the end of this year and moving forward, we will start receiving some casino revenue. And tackling a small project a year is how you finance a pilot project like this and attack and get your whole city covered over a five-to-ten-year span. There are grants out there. The Biden administration, through the Inflation Reduction Act and through another large grant program, has announced more, more federal dollars for lead pipes for government-run municipal water districts. And we are always looking for those. The administration is actually up to eight total grants already. And we will always look for more options to get dollars for projects. But right now, our two-million-dollar investment is being backed by millions from Indiana American Water because of the legislation passed in, in 2017. The next step is, I've got some meetings scheduled with the Indiana Finance Authority, the IFA, to talk through their component and the dollars that they will bring to the project and connect with them. And then we will, you know, if, if groups are comfortable with this, if the council's comfortable, we can file the paperwork to get this through the city council in April and then begin moving to the marketing piece of the project, the messaging piece in May, June, and July. But I just wanted to, one, have a public discussion, the one that we did in February, and two, discuss it in planning, and three, bring council members to ask Indiana American Water their questions upfront. And I was happy we were able to do that. But this is a, a priority project. We cannot go back in time and change annexation. But what we can do is solve the problems that annexing land does when you fail to provide. I know it's not a government service, but a service like clean water to folks in your community. And that's why I'm so passionate about this project. Questions?
Mayor, is there a possibility of committing either casino dollars to the next area that's, that's dense, has some density? Is it, there a possibility to get a commitment?
So, I mean, we can commit to looking into our next two or three or even four areas. That I'm not opposed to doing. What I will not do is commit any dollar amount to a specific neighborhood because here's how, whether it's casinos, a great example is marijuana and the taxes brought in from marijuana. Look at what Colorado did. They started a lot of projects. They were the first. Everyone was fine to Colorado to get their legal pot. Every other state around them...
...starts to legalize it. And that, those dollars brought in from that tax decreased. And they were unable to...
How about now?
It does.
And then, over time, they were not able to sustain longer projects. And I've said this in meetings, I have zero problem saying it again here. Our city's financial position, while we have balanced year-to-year budgets the last couple of years, is not on a strong financial position that I feel comfortable publicly committing casino dollars. I plan to use one-third of casino dollars to put it in the bank and shore up some of our debt. We have several line items within the city right now that are in the negative and have been in the negative for years and years and years and years and years. The other two-thirds of casino dollars, we will look at some capital improvements, a lot of infrastructure improvements, and then some equipment that makes our city staff more efficient. Some equipment we've never been able to look at. For example, wastewater, there is a wastewater inlet cleaner that is really robotic and takes one person instead of two people and can clean your stormwater drains two times as fast. But we've never been able to have that conversation. And these types of budgets allow us to look at efficient local government. But that's why I'm hesitant. You know, I know I would like to do about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. But if 2026's casino revenue is more, then that number changes. If 2027 is lower, then that number changes again.
Yeah, I can promise you it will be lower. It's going to be the first two, three years that we have the most casino expression of money. And so it could be a good idea to start to commit those monies early, early, early because those dollars will diminish after the first four or five years.
Yeah, and when it comes to committing dollars, I, I do want to be clear here. I look at projects with casino dollars that if the city pays for it, and for the example, 2025, that project will be complete in 2025. Because if we incur cost in 2026 with new dollars in the budget, that's when it starts getting a little murky. You want to do short-term projects that have the highest impact on your population that can be paid for in cash. You don't want to do like a project where you're paying off, say, a five-million-dollar bond, just as an example, using casino dollars when those fluctuate so much. Because that yearly, say, five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment might not seem bad in year one when we're hoping to get three to three-and-a-half million from the casino. Come year seven, when we're only getting, you know, one-point-seven or maybe two, that's a, now you're looking at twenty-five percent of your budget already committed to a bond that you made, someone else, that the previous administration made a decision on. So, one, for my predecessor, but two, also to be smart with the dollars is, that's, that's one reason why we are, we are looking at Tarrytown now. Because Tarrytown would never be able, we would never be able to afford this with casino dollars in a one lump sum payment. A lot of these other neighborhoods are low enough that it's like, okay, we can cover that this year.
I'm glad to hear that you're, you know, laying out a plan that goes beyond just Tarrytown and that you're thinking about these other pockets of the city. And the sizes of the neighborhoods, I realize, has a big bearing on how we pay for them and how much they cost. Have you considered other means of paying, other than casino dollars, to get these city water project done in future phases? Like, I think about redevelopment and the work that they've done with HUD and CBG money that has come, you know, as part of our entitlement from HUD. I know that when they undertake a neighborhood, they do it all. They do, they do stormwater separated from sanitary. They rebuild the whole right-of-way sidewalks, curbs, gutters. I don't know about water, though.
They don't. They don't do the water. So they don't do it all, but they do a large portion. And so how we look at that is, what block or blocks can we actually do a total makeover of the neighborhood? I would argue, if you find the right formula, you could potentially look at a smaller project through this pilot program that could be funded through HUD dollars, the CBDG funds, if it fit the right scope. You know, have I looked at it? Yes, I, I have. We are really pushing some state-ready grants, actually Ready 1.0, which, which funded part of this hotel. We're looking at Ready 2.0 to help offset a lot of our long-term audit projects, which is freeing up dollars over time. But edit is something that, you know, me, Sally, Jess, Marcus, we're looking at that once a week. Like, tracking the nickel, trying to understand why some audit dollars were transferred over to Fire PS Lit in the past and why some of those budget decisions were made. Because on paper, it looks great in August and September when the budget was approved. But in a December city council meeting with a lot of transfers, it, it raises eyebrows of like, what, this, this, these two documents aren't talking from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Every week, Jess, our, our controller, sends a report to every department head showing the percentages of every single item in their budget that they have spent. And every week, I find myself sending four or five emails back to the department heads asking for specific reasons why. Because we've got, we've just got to be better at tracking that. We all do it with our personal checkbooks. And I assure you that government here in Terre Haute will do it. We just have inherited a budget that is not quite the one that we would have put forth about a year ago.
Yeah, I understand. Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I just have one. On the Tarrytown, you had said you'd like to get seventy-five percent. What happens to the, let's assume you get seventy-five, twenty-five percent don't. So they're not connected at all?
They will not get theirs connected. They'll still have a will.
All right. Will the lines be there enough that if they decide to join, then they'll, they'll be able to do that? Because, you know, if they're going to look at everybody else and say, oh, we should have...
But they'll have to pay for it, then.
Okay, no.
Yeah, and there are some that are, it's next to a vacant lot. So if you did connect it, that vacant lot next to them becomes real buildable real fast.
Yeah.
And they might not want to neighbor. And again, these are individual decisions where I say, great. That's the best part about government. I need seventy-five percent to make this project happen. And in, in some of those instances, you know, would a new homeowner be stuck with those costs? Yes, yes. What concerns me, looking at the map, Tarrytown specifically, the fire safety concerns are huge. We had a structure fire there in December or January. But I, I know that when our fire department launches for an emergency event in Tarrytown, they automatically spin up another truck expecting water not to be there. Because we don't have fire hydrants in the corners that we need to have fire hydrants. So you are looking at homeowners' insurance that will go down for all these residents. Insurance for future development is going to be a lot better. So those are just additional costs that will come down that we can convey to the taxpayers about why this project means so much.
And you're going to market that to these people that you're trying to get the seventy-five to, hopefully, a hundred percent to join.
Yeah, the fire union is very, very vocal about this project because they've had some unsafe instances over the years. So they've agreed to come out with the administration and help with that door-to-door marketing to explain the public safety side of it.
Sounds good, thank you. I yield.
And the cost of that is included in this project, too, to supply the hydrants and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, and that goes in. Those are just your water main, classic, when you're in the right-of-way. Not to mention, a lot of right-of-way work's going to be, be done. So we just had a great right-of-way fee discussion last week. So it all, all kind of ties together.
Yeah, I think we need to talk a whole lot more about that fire protection. I mean, the water is, is, you know, obviously part of the conversation. But I really do think a lot of people don't take time to recognize fire protection's not there as well.
It becomes a communication challenge on, on the administration. And we'll, we'll seek out some advice for how to handle that. But it, it's a lot easier when we have nine champions on top of one mayor out there in, in the community discussing this than just one person from the mayor's office. So we will rely a lot on the, the city council for support. Because this is truthfully a project that when we complete, we say, hey, we are actually just getting started because we know our next two or three neighborhoods. The one that Councilwoman Hinton and I look at, I mean, they're smack dab right by Sarah Scott. That's in eighteen, thirteen, one ratio. So eighteen possible, thirteen customers ready to go to one water main. Not as dense as, you know, your twenty-five, thirty, forty-to-one is Tarrytown. But when I'm looking at the ratios, those are similar neighborhoods that you look at and you're like, give me a high-dense area to use state legislation and local dollars to create a match scenario.
So are you saying that that seems like it's likely to be a future project?
Likely to be. I, I will not commit. I'm not in a place yet where I feel comfortable saying, these are our next two neighborhoods. But I can say it's high on the, high on the draft list.
Great, all right.
That's also an opportunity for some, there's lots, there's several lots in that area as well.
That's why you see the eighteen to thirteen and the delta of five. Because there's five lots there where we can't do our infill housing on those five lots. Because a developer might want that lot for a dollar to develop, but if they find out, they have to put in a ten, thirteen-thousand-dollar sewer, or not sewer, sorry, well, it's different. You know, we tore down our first house today. Got twenty on the way this year alone, and we're trying to find funds for another twenty more to really dive into that list. And it is a lot easier to sell these lots when we have the utilities in place. So it, it affects our infill housing strategy as well. Which affects school enrollment. Sorry to keep going, but when you're looking at Tarrytown enrollment, Sarah Scott enrollment, and every head in the Vigo County School Corporation is additional dollars for that corporation, which we all know needs our help and support. So it is truthfully a, like, when we're talking about placemaking and building the community, that level of project, which can be hard to communicate in one flyer or door hanger. But that's, that's why we have government.
Well, it, it makes a lot of sense to focus on the places that are, where the infrastructure's already laid. The water line's there, the sewer line's there, the sidewalks are there, the curbs and gutters are there. And all through the core of the city, we've got a lot of that kind of land.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Hey, thank you, everybody, for participating. Thank you for coming. And that's it. Well, good journey this meeting. Too fast.
Too fast for George.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Should we, should I ask for a...